Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning, guys. I'll call the meeting to order it is nine. Nine eleven AM. Alan, do you want to do a little call, please?
District one.
Here. District two.
Here.
District three.
Here.
And I'm here. Yep, we have a corn me quich, our renewal and approval of the agenda. Anything to add? I know we're gonna have a special meeting on Monday, Finance Man at the Star, so I know there's some stuff here that if we, you know, we have some questions about anything that we can get approved on Monday, too, so. I know that we haven't met in a while because of, you know, circumstances that, you know, that was beyond our control. You know, family dealing with things and funerals, so. But we're glad we're back. We're glad we're back in session, so. I know there's some good information and good stuff to hear from your council members, so. Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Raymond?
Second.
Second by Annie. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, cheers. Approve the meeting minutes for two, four twenty-one. Yeah, it's been a long one, hasn't it? Can you read them out?
Yeah.
You kind of want to change that. Wymer's missed focus. You kind of want to change that, so.
Well, we just typed in "pass", it didn't auto-press.
Motion by Alan to approve the one change. With the change, second?
Second.
Second by Ray. All in favor? Motion, cheers. Alright, next up, we have the reports from the officers and the council members for Whiterth, and I'll go over a little brief thing. I know that the vaccine, the vaccine rollout for Whiterth has been a huge success. I know talking to, you know, many people across the areas and also our professional people and also some of the statistics they got from EOC and also Pat Butler and, you know, we've done a great job for Whiterth, you know, has done with our community health program of getting out these clinics and distributing the vaccines and putting vaccines in arms, you know, that's one thing I, you know, I interviewed for one of the newspapers and it was really exciting. I know that other agencies are looking to us and, you know, even like yesterday on the tribal, the Midwest, I held director's call. I was on at eleven AM. I know that Dan Frye said some really good things about Whiterth. You know, Dan Frye's our area director and he said that Whiterth was was leading the nation in vaccines. So it's something that was really, really good news to hear from all of us, you know. I know the council has worked hard has worked hard to get this in our people's arms. And I know one of the the statistics that's really kind of big there is eighty-seven percent of sixty-five and older elders are vaccinated. So that's something that's just really good, really good news and kudos to to all the workers that have put in those long hours to get our elders vaccinated, to keep them safe, so. Also, the delegates, you know, me and Alan attended the delegation meeting last night and that wasn't really good. I know that's some concerns out there. I know the people out there wondering what's happening, what's going on with our our constitution, and I know there's some good dialect last night. I know next week, on March fourth, over in Hinckley, we're having a special TEC meeting and a few of the resolutions that were passed, and there's a new one that's out here, but I think it's just gonna be discussion only and it's on Article Two, it's enrollments, membership. So there's some more information coming on that, too, so. And the last thing I want to talk about was culture, you know, culture and our immersion. I know that Annie and all of us, you know, and, you know, all the council members that really want to get more and more culture and our language out to our people, and that's one thing I know that I'll be, you know, we will as a council be striving towards, you know, putting together some plans hopefully here with our education department of trying to get our immersion school off the ground. So that's one thing I really want us to do is is work on our language and our, who we are, so our identity, so. Alright, that's kind of quick in a box for me, so. Alan, you want to say a couple of things? Me quich?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I also just want to reiterate and thank the nurses of Whiterth Nation and EOC staff for the outstanding vaccination rates that we have here in Whiterth Reservation. And we're leading the nation, as Chairman has said, and that's something that all credit is due to the hardworking people of Whiterth Nation and especially our tribal members. I want to keep our community safe and that's something that we will look back on for many years, Mr. Chair, as a very accomplishment of our people. I also want to thank the Urban Community Council and Mr. Fine Day for coming down and doing a presentation on dialogues. I know you guys have also expressed an interest in doing that for our other community councils. I think this is something that we should do more regularly. I think it was a good thing. I think we did a really good job down there and Lenny did a fantastic job and something we could repeat. Just a reminder for the folks that are watching at home, the TEC, as the Chairman had said, is gonna have a special meeting next Thursday. And just for those folks, there's gonna be a Zoom link invited for folks to get down there. I know they're gonna have COVID measures in place. And so we met with their delegates last night. It's also a very good meeting. Also, just very quickly, Mr. Chair, I did talk with Sandy Lake earlier this week related to some of the strategic direction that they want to go. They have expressed an interest in where we're at legislatively with Congress, but because of the complexities around that, they have also expressed an interest in being possibly a constituent band of the Minnesota Chippewa tribe. I know the TEC and Whiterth is a champion for Sandy Lake and we will continue to be that. So they've expressed that interest. They've also, one is also a good food for thought and I'll have Frank come in maybe on Monday, Mr. Chair. The land transfer issue. We want to make sure that Sandy Lake is going to be recognized, that those lands in Sandy Lake go to Sandy Lake, the people of Sandy Lake, so they have a land base. Because without that land base, it's gonna be very difficult for them to achieve recognition. So I'll ask Frank to call in on Monday, Mr. Chair, give an update. We'll let Sandy and then talk to you guys directly on where they feel they want to go. Other than that, I do notice that we have a demo plan on here on the agenda, which I was gonna ask for, and then hopefully under new business, if we could, maybe have someone from the legal department come down for eighteen fifty-five off reservation travel courts. Because I wanted to see, ask a couple of questions about that and maybe even have a discussion around a referendum on that. I know a lot of tribal members feel they should have a say-so over the courts, whether or not, you know. This has been a long, long, long discussion for a long time. So, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Me quich. Thank you. District one?
Thank you, Chair. Buju, good morning, everyone. Been a pretty busy week for us here at the council. We have numerous meetings that are that are very important that we get them done and yeah, we had a very good meeting with the Urban Council on there. And I thank Mr. Fine Day for the presentation he put on and those of us that could be there. I know we got pretty busy schedules, but I just want to remind everyone, you know, that Henry Fox is our community advocate officer. I believe his number's out there to reach out to him for help, but you gotta remember, he's only, he can only do what he can provide, you know. But otherwise, things seem to be going pretty good and you know, I just hope everyone had a good, a good week and a good weekend. It's gonna be warm and then we got our fishing derby tomorrow. Invite everyone down to come down to the Jake Blasey Fishing Derby. It's been on for years and that's about it, Mr. Chair. Me quich?
Me quich, thank you. Kathy?
Um, as far as District two, I want to ask. And I'm gonna ask about how long are the boxes gonna be out? They serve over three hundred every week, every Wednesday. I would like to know exactly because we're gonna lose two employees if it stops.
Oh, yeah. Well, we will talk about that. I think that's coming up.
It should be on the demobilization plan, yep.
Yeah, it's in the plan. Well, we'll talk about it, Kat. No one's gonna lose your job.
EMT, I'd like, you know, they moved home. I'd like to see them get a new kitchen. And it's been the work for a very year.
Yeah, okay.
Also, population side. I'm gonna bring it up again. That we make a motion to go by each district and the people. Number of them.
Yeah, I'll have Lori get you those numbers.
But I'd like to get a feedback from the rest of the group, you know.
Yeah, we're gonna meet on Monday, too, Kat, remember? And that the shooting start.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's all I have right now, except there's been so many deaths and like funeral wise it's been rough, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Kat. Is that it?
That's it.
Me quich?
Me quich, Mr. Chairman. I've been working with Raymond on homeless and we proudly, we got a family one going up in Menomen at the Wymer House. I'm not sure how many is in there. I haven't got an update on that, but it took what, five days to get that going? That was awesome. Curtis was also involved in that and I have to give a big shout out to the homeless program in Might. They did, they did an awesome job and of course Adam. Adam was awesome for us, too. I did meet with ICW and we just kind of went over, so I just wanted to let them know, you know, I'm there to support them and, you know, we wanna make sure our members are being served and they're going to try to get more information out there to the members on policies and stuff, which is good. I know they're looking for foster homes and, you know, we're gonna, they're gonna work on that. They're gonna talk to Lenny about, you know, how much they can put out and stuff. But I think informing our members would help a lot, you know, with that program. Yesterday, we met with behavioral health and, you know, there was some issues that come up, but it was good. I mean, because if you don't let them issues out, you really don't know how to fix them and I think we're gonna be moving in a good direction on these two programs. Curtis is there to help and I think it's gonna be good. I mean, like ICW said, they've never had a council member step up to tell them, you know, that they support them, you know, and that's something that I want to do because, you know, that's, we have to support them so they can support our people there. So, and with behavioral health, it's, we're gonna be moving forward on that. There was some concerns that I'll probably be bring up in executive hour on Monday. You know, if we have time today, I'll bring it up, but otherwise on Monday. It was just, but Curtis and Might be already working on him. I did attend the Zoom meeting with the urban. I attended by Zoom and Lenny did an awesome job. So, thanks, Lenny, and, you know, they had a lot of questions and good questions, you know, and I think that would help the other community councils, must be very important. That's about it. I'm gonna be meeting with other areas, too, and, you know, other programs, but right now I haven't set them up yet, but once I do, I'll have them invite all of you. Me quich?
Me quich. Thank you, Annie. Next up on the division reports, we have the EOC. Ed, are you on?
Aye, m'um. Good morning.
Good morning, Ed.
Well, you remember, last time we met, we talked about the demobilization plan that I presented to the tribal council and it was a phased approach of demobilization. Again, the council approved the plan to continue to operate at the Shooting Star Casino Stardust. The food shelf would continue on. EMP would continue on at the Shooting Star Casino. But look at transitioning back to sites. We also would release the security resources and look at adjusting staff. Currently, our liaison officer is down to one day a week. Our deputy IC is gonna be taking another job after today. And then, of course, our operations and logistics are primarily focusing on vaccine efforts and targeted testing and supporting that mission. Also overseeing that vaccination, those clinics here. Now, when we're talking about demobilization, I think it'd be fair to provide you with an update of COVID nineteen on the reservation. In, basically in January, up until last week, Whiterth was doing very, very well of active cases here. We were averaging about five all the way down to about one active case. We are experiencing a bit of an early indications of perhaps a third wave. I know there nationally, they talked about a third wave. Currently, we're at sixteen active cases and we have six hundred ninety-two cumulative cases. So a slight uptick from this, the past couple of weeks here. So, kind of brings us back to this demobilization piece here. And really, the question for tribal council is, which direction do we continue on to move forward with demobilization? Again, you approved, the council approved this phased approach and that's currently where we're at. The next options would be option three, option four, which can have a modified phased approach where, of course, EMP returning back to site, continue with the food shelf operation and continue to operate out of the Shooting Star Casino Stardust areas here. Option four would be demobilization entirely, and that's always been the decision of the tribal council to deactivate the emergency operation center. And the only question would be what to do with the food shelf and, you know, who would oversee that operation? In the demobilization plan, it identifies the executive director, deputy director to oversee that activity if chosen to continue. When it comes to inventory of the supply, I can tell you right now, no supply was, has been ordered since our last time we spoke here. So there still is adequate supply of those items in the warehouse. Probably enough for another month and a half if needed to continue here, so. That's really where we're at right now. I thought I'd just give you a brief update and look forward to some discussion about where we're at as far as the mobilization decision that the council would like for us to proceed with.
Well, Ed, I know that the elderly nutrition is going back to the communities where they, where they where they were made before. I know that's one piece that, you know, the council, that I know that we, that's already going in effect on Monday. So I know that's one piece that's gonna be taken out of that picture, but I guess for the rest of us, I'm not, I don't have the other plans in front of me, you know what I mean? So I know that I'm not sure if your council just wants to wait till Monday to maybe get, send us a copy. Ed, can you send us another copy of that? Or I'm not sure if Lori has a copy of that to resend it out so we can look at that harder? Again, what we have to demobilize and I, I know right now the EMPs are going back and of course, you know, there's jobs of those ones that work up at the casino and the banquet, but I know banquet is slowly kicking in, too, so. I know that they're booking, they're booking different events out there, having like little meetings and stuff for for different things. So they are giving some hours, so. I know that we don't have to worry about those, those employees that are, that are working for us, for doing that for us. I know they could be absorbed into the other divisions until we open up. Things get more open, so. But I know that the rest of the council, you know, I'm not sure how you feel about things. I know that we'll get the the other phases that, that Ed sent out. Maybe we can look at taking more pieces out there and let them slide back.
I just have some questions. I mean, he can answer them on Monday.
Okay.
But how much dollars we have left for the food shelf and he can get that to us on Monday? And then, what, if we do keep them going, can we move them to ShopCo just because we're losing revenue on that, on them rooms over there, you know? And with the casino, if you guys are still going, if we're still gonna go forward with the powwow, all the rooms are already booked in the main. So, they can't even book out no more rooms. So that's something I'd like to know about on Monday.
Okay, you get those. We'll get those answers for you, Annie.
I got just one question, too, Mr. Chair, if I may. Are they gonna use, EMT now, there's been quite a few who are asking, are they gonna allow the eat-in, eat-in doors at the centers or is it just the pickup?
That's a CAT EOC call there, so I'm not sure. But we'll get information for you, so. Ed, I think that, Ed, did you hear that question, Ed?
I did and, yeah, that's the decision from CAT as far as to allow in-person dining for our EMP folks.
Yeah, maybe some type of social distancing or move the Rice Lake, probably move their tables in the gym if they had to eat, you know, away, you know, different areas could be utilized, so. Alright, thanks. Any other questions for Ed, guess? Okay, me quich? Who else is on there?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, next up is Alders, huh?
Tito.
Tito.
We have to call him.
You know, sir, Pat? Oh, Pat, yeah, okay. They were stopped. They wanted to do some telehealth. They got some grants or something.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I thought maybe they weren't getting services or something.
No, they want to do services. DA has some grants or something.
Okay, good, good.
That was George Gogel.
Okay, from MCT, okay. And they got Tito on the line or? Oh, she's calling. Otherwise, is Dan on the phone?
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Oh, hey, Dan. Since you're here, do you want to give a little update on housing?
Sure.
Me quich?
We'll start with start with the waiting list, I guess. I'll just go quickly each by community, by community. We got thirteen on the list in Whiterth. Six in Rice Lake. Nine in Pine Point. Twenty-one in Nado Ash. Sixteen in Menomen. One in Albo. Three in Callaway. And that's a total of sixty-nine people on the waiting list right now.
Glenn, there's a lot of houses.
Vacancy report. What's that, Mr. Chair?
Well, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dan. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'll wait for my question till you're done. I'm sorry.
Alright. Alright, we can go community by community, too, on we got twenty-eight total vacancies. We got three in Rice Lake. Two are pending the rehab project and one's waiting for approval. We got one in Whiterth waiting on the rehab. We got eight in Nado Ash, but four of them are ready. We got eight in Pine Point and four of them are ready. And we got eight in Nado Ash, but four of them are ready also. So that brings us up to thirteen pending. Pending is either waiting for approval or just waiting for the guys to do the last couple of things in there.
Me quich?
Any questions on the vacancy?
So Dennis, on the, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On the waiting list now, at the meeting, they said they were going to start just leaving the ones on there that don't update, but they don't move until they actually update. Is that something we're gonna start doing then?
That'd have to be, the board would have to make a change to the AEO policy. Stating that we'd want to leave them on there. If they don't recert in their year, that they will be left on the list, but the person behind them, if they recert it, they'd get moved in front of them just to show our need.
Yes, because I think that'll help a lot, right, Ray? So we can bring up our numbers on our waiting list. Me quich?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
And also, Dennis, what is it, every six months or every year they have to reshare?
To be on a waiting list, you gotta update your app once a year.
Once a year? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I guess you answered my question, so.
And just a quick alright, just a quick update on Rice Lake Pine Ben Project. I did get an email this morning to notice to proceed, so. We're gonna meet with the contractor here probably within the next week and have a meeting with them. And just so everyone's on the same page. I guess that's, you know, that's a big accomplishment, I feel, you know, that it was a heck of a project to get through and, you know, we're at the, we're at the finish line right now. We've just started construction, so. I feel good about it, I guess.
Then, I guess the question I'm kind of thinking about again is the new houses in Whiterth. I know I've been getting some people asking about, you know, how do I apply for those new houses up in South projects? And I think that Annie, I think has, I think that's how it works, isn't it? Annie, that you guys are the ones that picked the or is that housing? Okay, okay, good, good. Okay, I'm getting that clarified. I just have to, Mr. Grab said. Okay, good. Alright, then. Well, I'll just steer everyone that has questions from me to you then, then, that has, you know, because I know they asked about those new
Yeah.
Those double whites.
Yeah, and hopefully, we're getting the ones in Rice Lake powered up today, so hopefully we'll be doing some movements here within the next week.
Good.
At the east in Rice Lake, so. And a quick update on our homeowner repair program. We got fifteen in each district now that are either on order or ready to be started up. Go ahead, Mr. Chair, I guess, if you got a question.
Well, I was just saying, thanks, I mean, there's like more questions on that and I'll just, I'm just sending everyone to you anyways. I give them your number, the, the 473 number, so I just tell people to call that number if they have questions, 'cause I can't really answer the questions.
But also Dennis, um.
That's fine, fine.
Dennis, can you also put out a, a deal for contractors, what they need to get into the business as far as insurance and stuff like that? Because I know we only got, I think it's three contractors and there are other people out there asking about that, how they get into the contracts. Maybe you can put something out on that, how they would, how they would go through to get, get the contracts to help out?
You want that to go to the paper or something, Ray?
Yeah, would you please? Because there's a lot of them out there asking, you know, how to get contracts and what, what they gotta go through to get them and, I guess I, it's been a while since I contracted from, so I don't really know myself. Thanks.
All right, we can do that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Dan? Thanks, Dan, keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Hey, Dennis?
I just wanna say thank you guys, you know, for all the help and everything with the Rice Lake Pine Ben Project and the CARES Act units, you know, with all working together. Uh, it won't be possible. Thank you guys again, and have a good one.
McGritch.
All right, is Maria, Maria Clark?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. Thank you, Maria.
Long time no see. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Council. I have a, not a lengthy report, but, you know, a lot of information, so I'm just gonna go ahead and start. We're still operating under modified stage four operations and, but we are cautiously planning to reopen at least the Natawash clinic soon. As you know, staff and clinic resources have been redirected to support COVID-19 operations. We also are the number of positive cumulative so far since last year is 380, but we certainly appreciate the decrease in the number of infections, our precautions, the three Ws, and also our vaccine efforts, especially the vaccine efforts by the tribe with PAT's department. I wanted to point out that Menomans County is still leading the state in vaccination efforts, but has fallen to second place after Cook County. However, we are proud to say that these county successes are attributed to tribal collaborations. The Minnesota Department of Health website has an excellent COVID-19 vaccine data page, if you're interested or have already looked at it. So I always look at it to see where we're at, kind of like competition, so. Waiters Health Center, as of today, is now offering COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine to all IHS eligible patients 18 years and older, including household members 18 years and older. The household members do not have to be eligible for IHS, but the offer has been advertised that they should reside at the same address as an eligible IHS patient aged 18 and over. So we're trying to get that spurred immunity going. The majority of our services are available to patients with very, well, they're starting, we're starting to grow our services a little bit more. We're opening dental up more because the patients, we test every patient when they are seen in dental, so we're moving towards more routine rather than limiting to just emergent and urgent services. Telehealth is still available for everyone, you know, especially if they don't have, if they have transportation issues. Of course, we'll see anybody for emergent and urgent care and more routine. We are expecting some more contract physicians. So we had one contracted physician that was, that was here over the summer and took a small break in December, mid-December, but he's returning in March, so he'll be back next week. So what we're trying to do, because we're having trouble with our, fulfilling our permanent vacancies with physicians, we're trying to rotate our contract physicians more often, so not getting a new one all the time, but, you know, they come here for three months, they try it out, and they said, yeah, we're interested in coming back, and we'll reschedule them for another three months, you know, when they come back. So that's our goal right now. And just because we are having problems with recruiting for physicians, I don't know if it's because of COVID, because of the weather, or, you know, it's Minnesota, it's too cold, so hopefully this spring we'll start to see some, some applications. So it's, we had three providers that left over the summer. Dr. Kleinschmidt, I think Leonard was one in early spring, and then Rostad, she left as well. So we, those patients were in panel to those three providers, and what we wanna do is use our contract physician in the interim to get these patients seen. And so as long as we, you know, for example, let's just say I was seeing Kleinschmidt, well, now I'll be, as a patient, I'll be seeing Dr. Holmes for the next three months if needed. And then Dr. Holmes, if he takes a break, then maybe I could be transferred to another contract physician. I don't, I know that being swapped around is an issue, but this is, this is in the interim and this is the best we can do. We have, we have patients that express their desire to be seen only by a physician. Sometimes they don't wanna be seen by a, a nurse practitioner, and we understand, that's a choice, it's a preference, but we do have physicians in-house and we are able to offer that for them. They're here at least a, at least three or four months and they might take a break and then come back. So that's our goal, is trying to get continuity even in the contract physician. Let's see. Um, we, yeah. Just on that, so services for physical therapy and occupational is also opening up. Audiology is also opening up a little bit more. We're being cautious just because, I don't know if there's still, if officials are still saying at the national level that there's gonna be another surge in March. I hope not, but that's why I'm cautious about opening services even more. I want to, I really want to. Rice Lake, we, not myself, but my team, we went out there yesterday, the renovation is complete for the clinic, and we just have a few things that we need to get out there for in terms of equipment, like our AEDs, backboard, some other things. So the MOU and the lease, the lease is in place, the MOU, I believe Pat will need to bring to the tribe if she hasn't already for signature, and then everything will be in place for that. I guess we'll just need to wait till spring before we can pave the parking lot. And so that's exciting stuff. We're also meeting with Natawash, with the area OEH officials regarding the Natawash project, joint venture project. We're doing that on Monday, so I'm excited about that. And let's see. Yeah, that's it, really, we're just, we're, you know, we desire to open the field clinic soon, but all depends on the seriousness of the respiratory illnesses and staffing and COVID-19 infections. We are getting, we have had about four new nurses on, on site or, you know, that we've hired, so that is helping our, our staffing levels as well. And that's all I have, really. Any questions?
Any questions, Council?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Um, Maria, is there like a time I can meet with you? I mean, I don't know if Kathy wants to be involved too, since she is the laida, but I, I've been getting a lot of complaints and I'd like to talk with you about them. It's not only coming from staff, but our patients. And some of them are pretty, I don't know, they really kinda make me mad, but if we could set up a meeting where we can, you know, I'd rather talk to you first before I bring it out here and Council and we'll go from there.
Yeah, sure. Um, what times, when's a good time for you?
I'm, I'll have my assistant reach out to you because she has my category, so, and then I'll go get it set up.
All right, sounds fine, yeah, just she can call me directly.
Okay, you go ahead.
Thank you, Maria. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say, McGritch, for helping move that clinic along in Rice Lake, it's a much needed deal, so I send McGritch to you for reaching out and doing what you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria.
Where's I, the next area.
Me too.
McGritch.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Is, Tito, hello?
I couldn't get a hold of her. I couldn't get a hold of her.
I'm moving on to new business, I guess, unless she called or reached out to us, but we'll put her in, if she calls. Len, our new business, oh, Alan wanted to talk about to telehealth for veterans, huh?
Yeah, for Pat.
Pat? And I know Len said that M1 is in the signature request. Yes. Yes, Pat?
Okay.
You got the flu.
So I don't, tell me about the telehealth project.
Yeah, there was, George Gogli and VA are trying to do telehealth for veterans that are rural America, and they want, they wanna focus on tribal veterans. And so I was hoping you could connect with them and, 'cause I think they say there was maybe funding opportunities for that as well.
Okay. So is that the telehealth project and we would provide space and they would provide a provider?
I think so, something like that. And then there was also Marvin Conklin, he works for the Fargo VA for this area as well, separate project that's veteran focused, but he also has some similar proposal for that as well. Was hoping you could reach out to them.
Okay.
And see what we can do to get those guys started up.
Okay, so reach out to them and reach out to Gogli as well?
Yeah, George is at Minnesota Chipmunks Tribe, so.
Yep. Yes, I can reach out to them and get some of those things rolling.
I just also like to add, Mr. Chairman, that just with regard to telehealth as a whole, during this pandemic, there's been some waivers that the Minnesota Department of Human Services received from CMS at the federal level on making it a lot easier for not just veterans, but our other health and behavioral and mental health services to utilize telehealth during the pandemic, that has made providing the services much easier. And there's currently a bill before the Minnesota State Legislature that would make those waiver requests permanent. Right now, they're scheduled to expire in June of this year, but the bill that's before the legislature would make those waivers that allow us to do telehealth a lot easier permanent contingent upon approval at the CMS level. So that's something we're continuing to monitor. It also has to impacts the whole four walls policy issue with CMS, which we have that extension through October 31st now. But we're also working with Senator Smith's office on making, attempting to make a permanent fix for that four walls policy.
Yeah, that's something that, we as a council, we've, we've been in, in the loop with this for a while. I know, I can even talk to DHS and the governor, I know that, when the governor keeps extending this to the state of emergency that, that helps us keep our telehealth going, so, you know, that was one of the big things that I was, I was concerned about months ago, was if he ever let up on that. I know the Republicans were pushing hard on him to, to stop that, so. But McGritch, thanks, guys. All right, any other questions on the telehealth for the veterans? Okay, next up is 1855, and are we gonna talk about this in the, you guys?
Yeah, this was 1855.
Frank Bebo on them?
Yeah, I had wanted Monica to be here for this discussion, apparently she's on her way in. I don't know, I was just texting Shanda. And so I don't know if we wanna go on to other stuff before Monica gets here, or if Council just wants to move on it. My, my only concern, so this has gone through the whole process, so 1855 authority has approved it. I know Monica has, at least in a division director meeting, expressed her support for it. We had a follow-up conversation with the tribal courts, legal and Frank Bebo, to move it forward, and that's what brought it here today. The one conversation that we said we were gonna have that we hadn't had was with our own conservation, like Al Fox, but since Monica's in favor of it and she oversees conservation, I mean, that's the one reason why I wanted Monica in here, you know, just to say everything's good to go. But basically, what, what the resolution does is it authorizes, it expands the wider travel code to include certain provisions that have already been adopted by the 1855 treaty authority, including the rights of Menomans Code and the rights to use, occupy and travel through the 1855 ceded territory. And then if you look at the resolution on, on the third page, towards the bottom, the be it therefore, or be it further resolved clause, and it has that underlined paragraph, there would be an amendment to the judicial code, to chapter two, section one, by creating a new paragraph J, that allows the tribal court to exercise jurisdiction off reservation, just simply because the current judicial code really focuses on on reservation activity, and so this amendment will allow the court to exercise that jurisdiction off reservation.
Len, do you think that strengthens us for sovereignty, or do you think it's gonna?
Well, in, in my opinion, it's, it's a gray area. I think that there are other reservations that, that do this. Bondelech does it, for example, through their tribal court for the 1837, their 1837 off reservation rights. And then, you know, of course, the way that, you know, Grand Portage and Forest Forest do it for their 1854, is they have like their tribal court is part of that 1854 territory, it's not part of that, that their, their on reservation tribal court. So there, there's models that do it both ways. But, but this way, we get something started, and then, and it's my understanding that, I was at the 1855 meeting, but I heard from people that were there, that Lutleych Lake is actually going to also be initiating something. And so maybe further down the road, if there's a federal court consent decree or something that sort of formalizes the 1855 authority, then, you know, this tribal court might go, might be more appropriate to be under there. But just for right now, where we're at, to get something going, this makes the most sense to move forward in this way.
Then Monica is here?
Oh, okay.
I asked her to come into the building and then come down.
The only, the only question I had, Len, was, I'm glad you came down, was, 'cause I know some, some of the band members out there, they wanna, a lot of them wanna see it off the rails because they don't wanna go to state courts, they'd rather go to tribal courts. But then it kinda got spun in another direction. Some of the, some of the folks were saying, well, you know, if we're gonna have these courts and all that, we should put it on a referendum. And I know that same thing, and so that's what I was gonna bring to you, is kinda switch thoughts around that. 'Cause I, I'd be in favor of doing a referendum on that 1855 courts, you know, that would be good. And I think if all were at it, we may as well just do it for the on reservation court as well, you know, that way it's kinda locked in and, you know, I mean, this has been going on since, what, 96?
Yeah, that was the tribal court.
People saying, well, they should have been put on a referendum. I think we should just put them both on a referendum, to be honest with you. I think they'll pass, I think they'll pass, but, you know.
I mean, probably what would be the most prudent, if that's a direction the RBC wants to go, would be to like, put the judicial code up for a referendum vote, you know, which establishes the tribal court. And then with this, with this new addition in there that authorizes the off reservation jurisdiction.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's interesting. So it's under one thing?
So it'd be one, and then it would be putting the code out per referendum vote for the people to decide, do you approve of this code or not, yes or no? And then if they do, then that authorizes, you know, the actions of the court, both on reservation and off reservation.
But the one thing that I know that they're kind of getting at is for the pipelines that are, they're prioritizing the number of trespassers. So I know that if we wait till 2022, there's nothing we can do for those individuals that are in the courts now. So I know that's why, that's why they're kind of asking the tribes, the bands, us on Leach Lake to put this together, so we.
We can pass it. It's just work towards a referendum. And that would be my recommendation, as long as Monica's in favor of continuing to move forward with the 1855 off reservation court, would be to authorize this today, keeping in mind that the codes that would be added into, integrated into the White Earth Tribal Code have been adopted by the 1855 authority and have an 1855 authority policy or code for a number of years now. So I don't know, Monica, if you just want to chime in?
No, I think that this is the right step to make. It's a progression that we've needed for quite a while and it's the best way that we can protect our members.
And before you came in, Monica, the one thing that I mentioned is that this has gone to the 1855 authority and it was approved there, you know, and then we had a conversation with the tribal court judges and administration and Frank Beeble. And then the one thing that we had kind of said we were going to follow up on was to have a conversation with our own White Earth Conservation Officers, and that hasn't happened yet. And that's just where I wanted your input to the RBC.
Yeah, I think we will need to talk to them as far as their jurisdiction, what they can enforce and how we deal with that. I think that's what Frank wants right now is a method, a method to move forward to show that we have that set up there.
Well, I'm okay with that. So long as we, so long as we have understanding, well, how about this? So I'm going to get asked the question.
Yes.
I'm going to ask you a question. When can we expect language on a potential referendum?
So you can authorize a referendum today. I can write the resolution today that authorizes a referendum question for 2022.
But we can approve this today?
You can approve this today as is, and then separately approve a resolution authorizing a referendum on the judicial code in 2022.
You want to put on a referendum first? We don't, we don't have to wait till 2022.
No, you don't have to wait till 2022, but it would, there would be, it would be an extra expense. I mean, you could have a referendum, I think, under the Constitution within 60 days.
Well, can you, I mean, even if I get us to cost on that?
Yeah, because I mean, you did.
It's like 40 grand.
It's like 40 grand. It ain't much. Because I know they've been talking about that for years on this course.
I know, and that's one of the biggest, you know, concerns out there is that we don't have referendum vote on the big decisions, you know, when it's.
Something like this.
I know. And I understand what they're coming from too, so it's like, I think we should do the referendum, we can move forward.
I think so too. Pat, do you have any questions on that?
No, I don't. My 1855.
Any questions, Pat, on a referendum for the tribal court?
Um, no. No, I don't.
So, you know, I would just say, and when I get done, maybe Lori can talk for a little bit, I would just say that, you know, I'm not opposed at all to a referendum for the tribal court. Like, I completely understand, you know, where that's coming from and questions that some people have about, you know, the legitimacy of the tribal court under our current constitutional structure that we have. The only thing that I would raise as a caution to the RBC is the number of things and agreements and practices that have been in place for decades now that relate to the way that White Earth operates and a number of our programs, not just through natural resources or public safety, but also, you know, child welfare, civil commitment, behavioral health. There's a number of areas that rely on the tribal court. And by putting it up for referendum vote, it's a possibility that the referendum vote's going to fail. And if that possibility comes to pass, then that leaves us with no judicial option to exercise those practices and those agreements. And we'd be jeopardizing a lot of those things should that referendum fail. Like, that's just like a point to be aware of for the RBC. And so then, if it goes to referendum and if referendum fails, then, you know, basically if there's a huge part of, you know, behavioral health and civil commitments and substance use, public safety, natural resources and ICW, that would have nowhere to go but to state court. And then a lot of the agreements that we have in place really wouldn't be in effect anymore. So I mean, that's just something to consider as you're thinking about this.
And sorry, Lori, if you have, maybe bring some language on Monday then?
Yeah, because, you know, to me, we failed our constitution to begin with and failed our members without putting it to a referendum.
I disagree.
And, you know, that's their big concern is, you know, they never have a say in big things like this, you know? If we can give more information on that, that would be great. Now, you know, I'll rethink it because I think, you know, our members don't deserve the honorable votes.
And I don't disagree with that, but I just want the council to be fully aware of the decision that you're making and the potential ramifications for that.
Well, I think, I think a lot of folks are accustomed to it probably by now. And then the other question is, is like, okay, if it comes to that, then that's an eye-opener for everyone because, you know, then this government has been operating.
Without the consent of the people.
Without the consent of the people, you know? So we got to be the consent. That's how, that's how government works. Governments operate at the consent of the people that put them there.
It's a full circle. Are you anything you want to ask, Lori, about putting the court up for possible referendum?
You know, I guess I would just, I'd want to be sure what would happen without a, you know, if something should go awry and it didn't move forward, like what that means for the cases that we're in, you know? That would be my concern.
Maybe bring some, like the resolution, like we've done, like a proposal, you know, and a resolution on Monday.
Yeah. So the RBC is going to have another special meeting on Monday. And so maybe you and I can get together later today and maybe if you, Lori, want to focus on like what the court, there's currently agreements that are in place, all the different divisions that, you know, sort of rely on the tribal court. And then I can work on language and then we can come back to the RBC on Monday.
Would we want to have like talking sessions on it so that people learn from?
I think, well.
I mean, you know, so that's based off, you know, this is what we're doing and then this, if this, this would look like this, if this.
I would just put on like maybe a 90-day timeline, you know, first, third is presentations, then, you know, the 60-day notice, you know, when it goes up, you know?
Because, yeah, they, you know, they need to be informed of what will, it will look like if they do, you know, deny it. But, you know, at least they're getting that voice too, you know, if we do choose to go that way. So, you know, that's, that's what I like about it, you know, because a lot of our people just feel that they're not heard.
Right. I understand that.
Well, you know, sitting on that 1855 treaty, you know, when they first brought that up, I thought, wow, that's pretty neat that White Earth be the first one to bring it up. But then after a while, I was thinking, well, we don't even belong to the 1855. We belong to the 1863, you know? And so, but I, at the time, I thought maybe it should be better from one of the tribes from the 1855, which would be a law action of Leach Lake, you know, the patient takes the lead up. Because looking at it now, I truly believe we should have a referendum because it don't really affect us, it's up there, a lot of our members do get out of their stuff into 1855 and it gets taken off our resume. So, yeah, I'm all in favor of, you know, as long as we know the consequences of what could happen if it don't pass.
Right. Okay, well, then, since this is on the agenda today, then probably the appropriate thing to do would be to table this and then, and then we can have the discussion on Monday.
Okay, thanks, Lynn.
Thanks, Mitch.
All right, next.
Motion probably to table.
Motion to table the 1855 tribal court discussion, motion by Alan, second by Raymond. Alan, favor? Cat? Kathy? Kathy? Too much for you. Anyway, motion to table the 55 discussion. Are you a yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, next up, thank you, thank you, girl, Mitch. Next up, we have, or signature request.
Cola bylaws.
Oh, I'm sorry, gee, you guys, I want to have any of your, Cola bylaws. Go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have this, rather than putting it on the signature request as normal, I pulled it out for under new business, just simply because we had the Cola School Board meeting last Friday, which is currently, the RBC is acting as the Cola School Board. We've had these bylaws that have been drafted for a while and kind of sitting out there. And last week, we, the school board, the RBC sitting in the school board, had decided to move forward. And the reason why it's just not in the regular signatory request is if you look at the resolution that approves the bylaws, on the last be it further resolved clause, it directs each district representative to appoint two district school board members, and then the chairman and the secretary treasurer to collaboratively appoint one at-large member. And then the interim board will be in place until the next regularly scheduled election. And then what this will do is it will get a independent school board established for the Circle of Life Academy so that they're able to operate fully as a school. And these bylaws have been before the RBC before as discussions moved on over them. They're fairly comprehensive bylaws. In fact, I believe that the Bureau of Indian Education has even reviewed these bylaws and said they look exemplary and actually look like sample bylaws that they'll be sending to other VIE schools.
Okay. Motion. Motion by Alan, second to approve the bylaws. Second by Raymond, all in favor?
All in.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lynn.
So then, if each of the district representatives and the chairman and secretary treasurer, probably as soon as possible, if you want to get your two, your names or your board appointments to Ron, Dapunaga and Gemma Ledbetter, that would be great, so they can get moving.
Lynn, where's your?
Yeah, Maria, I was going to ask about this. Did you hear the consent agenda?
Yeah, where's that consent agenda?
So. So it's a two-page consent agenda because we have a lot of things and there's a lot of ratifications as well. I don't think it's in the packet, but Lori, we sent it to everybody yesterday. Yeah. And the only thing that I want to specifically point out on the consent agenda is the welfare amendment to our tax agreement that we've negotiated with the Department of Revenue. And we had a conference call here a couple of weeks ago now with the Legal Council for the Department of Revenue, went over, made a couple of changes. The good thing is, is the formula will continue to change and update based on, on an annual basis, based on an estimate of the amount of people who are purchasing online and having delivered on or near. But what entering into the agreement now, guys, is it gives us, it'll give us a lump sum from 2018 to present. And then going forward, that formula will continue to.
How much left?
I'm not sure the total amount, but it'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, Annie, can you make a revision on the LLCs if they need to come to the table? Because if Lenny approves them, can't you two just sign them?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing in the LLC code that requires them to come to the RBC. I reviewed the LLC code and it just says, you know, the secretary treasurer will issue certificates of good standing. So, but I mean, it's just been the practice to have them come here, so it's up to the RBC.
So you just send them over to me outside?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is kind of shortened it too, you know? Okay.
And, and that's what we'll do from now on, as soon as Lori gets the application.
So it's reflected in there, so I'll move for that procedural term.
Okay. So, Maria, I think, I think the motion would be to amend the LLC process to authorize the secretary treasurer to approve LLC applications without RBC approval.
Don't they, don't they have to go through you, Lynn?
Yeah.
They have the power criteria.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good, good. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to go.
All right. But once that ends, once they're done in legal, Alan can sign it.
All right. Motion by Alan to approve the LLCs to make sure you just go through Lenny and Alan and then I sign off on it.
Yeah.
So motion by Alan, second. Second by Annie, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
All right, guys, if we want to do one vote for the consent agenda today.
Yeah, so do you want to get a copy of it?
No, I, that's what I forgot.
Did you see it, Ray?
Lori sent it yesterday. I don't know.
Okay, but then I should have.
Okay, okay. Annie, you see it? Kathy, did you get a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Alan, second. Second by Annie, Alan's favorite. Motion carries. All right, guys. Well, I think that's it for today. I know we're going to go into executive session for just a little bit, I got to. 10 minutes. Let me go ahead. Thank you for being on today. Stay safe. You rub them in. And we can hit a couple of these in here.